Our third base study session. Thank you to all the counselors and to the clerk staff for moving this day so that we can all enjoy the inauguration celebrations. Alrighty, I have item number eight and I am going to call that one ready. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item nine. It's an appropriation for the New York Canal Museum and it's ready. Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you. In lieu of Counselor Penny Agua, I'm gonna go to Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. Items ten through fourteen, we're gonna hold those until Monday until Counselor Penny Agua returns hopefully.
Alrighty, and you also have the next two items, Counselor.
Okay, and for those ones, we did discuss these in the committee meeting last week, but if there wasn't that many people on. So if someone is here from, I believe it's the Personnel Office, I can't see who's all on the call, but if somebody can just briefly discuss both of those items, please. Donna, maybe?
I see her.
I was gonna say, can you guys not hear me?
No, I hear you. Nah, I don't.
She's having some technical issues.
Okay, is anyone else that works in that department on the call? No, President Hudson, do you wanna, can you hold these and then when she gets gone, can we go back? Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items seventeen and eighteen. The item seventeen is the downtown Mill and Pave adding for construction inspection expenses. And eighteen is with Sura to lease some parking spots. Both passed committee, but I'd like to just reiterate a concern that I believe was brought up by Counselor Green about the price for, oh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You guys, you can still hear me? Okay, I'm having some problem with WebEx. As long as you can still hear me, the concern is about the price for what we're leasing these spots out for. You know, my hope, along with, I think, you know, several of the folks on the committee, is that it won't set a lower price for the market itself downtown and that if we were to sell this lot or any others, that it wouldn't be reflective that this is a one-time exception that we're making.
So what do you want to do with that, Counselor? Counselor Carney. Okay, everything I heard, I think item seventeen's ready. And he may jump back on and you wanna say something?
Madam President, I think, I think Dean is ready too. We just wanna make sure it's not a precedent, but it's fine to move forward.
Yeah, this is, President Hudson, this is Jen Tiff with NBD. I just wanted to chime in since NBD actually brought this to DPW and ultimately to you all. And we completely appreciate the comments by Counselors Carney and Green and certainly understand the concerns about any precedent being set. We would certainly not be proposing a deal at the price of fifty dollars per space per month in that lot if it wasn't such a short-term request. This lease would only be from February first of this year through April of this year. So it's just a three-month, very short-term lease. The pandemic will still be underfoot, unfortunately. And so this is very much pandemic pricing to help out, you know, an important commercial landlord in our central business district. And because of the really short-term nature of it, we don't think this is precedent-setting. So I just wanted to allay any fears that were shared by other counselors.
Do you have any more questions on that?
I have no questions, Madam President, but I'm aware of the effort. It is temporary. It's related to the fact that this lot since empty for the most part because of COVID, these, the large workforce that works in the building walks a great distance to the most for parking, safety issues and the like is a part of the concern, but also again, the fact that the lot has been empty. And honestly, I think, you know, I think this was the right move to accommodate the workforces in that building. Certainly, while we don't bend the rules just for the sake of doing that or adjust things for this, just for the sake of doing it, I think considering the circumstances, considering the environment and the potential to lose two, three hundred people in a workforce from the city to the suburb is not ideal. So I just wanna express my appreciation for the effort on the part of the administration to get this done.
Thank you. Okay, so both seventeen and eighteen are ready. I'm gonna try to go backwards and go to Donna Briscoe.
Sorry about that earlier. Yeah, so we had two items that we were putting forward. One is the agreement to move the rest of local two eighty and the deputy chiefs from UMR formerly Pomco over to Exelis as of two one. You know, that is something we have been, you know, hoping to get done. And because of the timing of when we received agreement, we needed a sixty-day period to notify UMR. So we're just requesting from the council to approve that move so that everyone is on Exelis as our third-party administrator.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Donna? Nope. Okay, thank you. And then sixteen was, is that, that's a different one. Did you have sixteen?
Yep, I have sixteen. Actually, I think Counselor Rudd put it forward, but we're asking for a budget move so that we can
Director Rudd.
Director, sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, so we're asking for a move for a position to centralize all of our risk and workplace safety. We have one position out at DPW that is a safety instructor. And moving it under our office would have it, have a safety instructor for us citywide and we're requesting that that, that transfer be approved. The money would just move from DPW to our office. No increase in salary.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Alrighty, thank you, Donna. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Thank you, President Hudson. I have items nineteen and twenty. Item nineteen is the zone change, the tax amendment to extend the protection of the special permit classification across all zoning districts in regards to care homes. The number twenty is Barks and Rec LLC. It's their sole provider, they provide shelter services, and that's a bid without competitive bidding, so. Barring any questions from my fellow counselors, I'll say they're both right.
Counselor Hogan, for number nineteen, the Corporation Council would like to talk to everyone in executive session immediately after the study session.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. I think we're all aware of that. I think we got your, your correspondence today regarding that. I wish we had a little more time to review it, but we got it this morning, so we'll talk about it in the executive session.
Thank you.
All set, Counselor?
Counselor
Yes, thank you.
Someone else was just speaking.
Yes, it was me, Madam President. I have a question on item number twenty. I was just wondering, didn't we just approve different shelter services for the SPCA? Do some of that work?
So Counselor, this is Juliette Lefebvre, Commissioner Parks and Recreation. So there's three specific services that all do varying jobs for the dog control. SPCA, that was a change to the Humane Society. That's for abused dogs that are taken in by the Police Department for cases of abuse and neglect. This is, the other one you did was VMC, which is for emergency medical care. This one is for just shelter services for dogs that are picked up off the street.
Thank you.
They're all specialized, correct, Commissioner?
Yes, each, each of those three vendors serve a very specific specialized purpose.
Commissioner? Off for me there, President.
Alrighty, Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item twenty-one through twenty-four. I'm gonna ask Chief Mon to go first. Good afternoon, Counselor Majoke. Good afternoon, Madam President and all the members of the council. Item number twenty-one, I'm seeking your authorization from the council for the Fire Department to enter into an agreement with FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, grant in order to buy thermal imaging cameras which allow our firefighters to search buildings for trapped occupants and a search for hidden fire when there's no visibility. We're asking to spend up to a hundred, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from this grant that will purchase twelve thermal imaging cameras. There is a local match of ten percent. Just a side note, in our contingency plan, twenty thousand dollars were cut out of the budget in our contingency plan that we're planning to be used to pay for new thermal imaging cameras. So we're in a need for those right now because some of them are coming to the end of their useful life. So that's twenty-one. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Chief. You're welcome. Thank you very much. The next one, the next couple of items are Police Department and I see Janet Burke here and Chief Cecil in. If you guys could tag team somehow. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Janet. Oh, sure, sure, Counselor, thank you. The first one is for, there's two grants for the New York State Department of Homeland Security. One is for the tactical team.
Hold on one minute, Janet, Janet, please, hold on. Because I see a lot of unmuted calls and I hear a lot of feedback, so if everybody could put yourselves on mute, please. Thank you. I'm sorry, Janet.
No, that's okay. State Department of Homeland Security. One is, the first one is the tactical team grants. Is it me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, and that is for tactical team training, equipment protective security detail and bipods and tripods, equipment packs for the SWAT teams. And that is not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. And the second one is to the same funder, and that's for a critical infrastructure grant. And that money is going to be split between the Fire Department and the Police Department. The police is using their portion for fencing to go around the back lot of the PSB in order to protect the building. And the Fire Department is using theirs for Chief Mon, do you remember? Doesn't seem to be on here. Chief?
Sorry, sorry, I'm trying to
Yeah, that's okay. I wanna go, I believe it's for radios, for radios that inside the PSB, they're better, they're better to be able to communicate with people inside the PSB. It's a better frequency.
I'm correct. Can you hold on for one second? I have somebody that can come speak on that if you need to, but that you are correct, Janet. But I have Chief Downs who was assisting with that, that could help clarify anything else.
Madam President, I just wanna point something out to Janet. Janet, I don't believe your letter shows that there's two uses of the money. It just shows for fencing and that's the way the ordinance was written, so.
Okay. That's the case, I apologize. There was, there were two, that we were also applying for the radios for the Fire Department. So is it, is it too late for me to change that letter?
Without, without, if the council has no problem, yes, you can substitute the letter and we'll get new legislation drafted.
That would be great. No, I don't doubt that for a minute. Thank you.
Janet, this is Do you need me to explain anything on the Fire Department's end? At all, Counselor Majoke? No, Counselors, I mean, I was in the committee meeting and I get it. Counselors, do you, just for the sake of the other counselors, please do a brief overview. Okay, I have Chief Downs here, he'll explain.
Good afternoon. We're in the process of updating all of our portable radios for the rigs to communicate. And the big thing that we're looking to have, it's gonna be automatic anyways, is an encrypted channel so we can speak without the public hearing. So we need a complete update of our radios that's going through the county. And this grant will just subsidize our cost for the city to update a small portion of our radio.
And then follow-up questions, Counselors? All right, thank you. Thank you, Janet. Next.
Yep, so, thank you. Good afternoon. Janet went over twenty-two and twenty-three very well. Twenty-four is a JAG grant that's been sitting around for over a year now. We're coming up on the timetable where we need to spend it. We'd like to purchase more equipment for the Public Order Unit. We tested out multiple equipment and this, this brand came not only better in the effectiveness, but it's also cheaper to the tune of thirteen hundred dollars versus fourteen seventy-five per officer. So it's a saving of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per officer. The grant itself is fifty-three thousand dollars. There's no match required. And another reason this equipment was chosen, and it's an RFP, I know the President, President Hudson hates those, but it is an RFP, and again, this equipment was better not only effectively, but it was cost-effective as well. Beyond that, it also meshed very well with the equipment that we already have, giving us more of that whole profile gear so we don't look like a Public Order Unit. We look like regular officers with other gear underneath those uniforms that allow us to react if we have to.
Questions, Counselors?
Yes, I have to ask a question. I hear everything you're saying, and the last three items were for policing, okay? So in the era that, I'm not naive to some of the things that go on, but being the era that we're in, I'm looking at everything that you have on here pertaining to policing and it's all about things that's gonna, to me, it further divides. You're gonna wrap a gate around the back of the public safety, whatever, building and then you're gonna buy all this tactical team stuff. So I'm just interested to know, at some point, when you're looking for grants, are there any grants to kind of try to connect the Police Department to the community? Not things that's gonna, we're gonna see as being isolated?
Sure, that's a great question, President. And if we find those grants, we would certainly pursue them. These ones obviously are very specific, Homeland Security has to be, infrastructure and things like that. With regards to the courtyard, just so you know, we're not the only ones that use that. Fire departments there, the District Attorney's Office, and all the city court judges park back there too. So it does need to be much more secure than it really is right now. And as far as the tactical team, I just wanna mention, we, this is a role that we've taken on more and more over the years, which means, which is dignitary security. We didn't necessarily ask for it, but it was thrown on our shoulders and we've taken it over more and more and more when, when various politicians, mostly politicians, come into the city and we become their security while they're here. We've had a big turnover with the officers that used to do that. So we need more training for the officers that are still here and a lot of our equipment is antiquated. So we need to upgrade that stuff, but primarily, most of that is for dignitary security and it's not a job that we necessarily raised our hand and said we'd like to do. It's just something that was thrust upon us.
When I hear tact, when I hear tactical, it just drives me nuts.
I understand. Yep, Janet probably, she may know the more specifics to it, but I believe the bulk of that is really for training and equipment for the dignitary security folks that are protecting, mostly politicians when they come into town.
Right, that is what these particular grants are, and it just so happens that these were very specific. And I, and I think probably what we'll see going forward is more grant opportunities that will be for bringing the people together perhaps once there's a new president now and the New York State is kind of doing some shifting. So I would think that we'll be seeing more opportunities for grants like that.
President Hudson, if I may? Chief Cecil, I was wondering, you spoke to the need for additional security or fencing behind the public safety building. Have there been any incidents that would necessitate the need for additional security?
Yes, over the summer when we had some of the demonstrations and it was just some, not the most, not the majority of them. But there were a few, primarily the night where we had some of the damage on South Salina Street. That courtyard was breached, meaning they came around the backside of it and came in to the courtyard where all our cars are and some of our equipment. So it has happened. And beyond the demonstrations when it occurred there, we've had folks, it's just constantly just walk through there. Some of them were walking through for no nefarious reason, but we don't know that. They're just kinda using it as a cut-through. Meanwhile, we have all these vehicles there, and again, it's not just us, with City Court and Districts.
Well, and Chief, when you say breached, I mean, that means people are, you know, back there, but was there any instances of actual damage to police vehicle or other vehicles that might have been there?
The night of, the one night I spoke of, the other was, well, there were some trash cans and things, items being thrown around the vehicles. That would probably be the only case that I can indicate where there was actually damage, Counselor.
Okay, and I had some specific questions in relation to the grant for the tactical gear. The grant speaks about training equipment. Can you discuss what training equipment's actually being purchased with the grant?
Sure, well, I can, the training would be actually training folks on the intricacies of dignitary security, meaning
Because I do understand that part, but my question specifically relates to, relates to the fact say you're gonna be purchasing training equipment, I'm wondering what training equipment are you purchasing?
Okay, I think, I think it's, it's my understanding it's training and equipment.
Yeah, hold on one second, I'm just looking it up.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm just
Okay, I get it wrong, I thought it was training and equipment.
Okay. Okay, so we can
No, it's right, you're right, Counselor. It is read that, it does read that way. Purchase tactical training, tactical team training equipment. So I'll look into that. I think there probably should have been an end in between there, but I can find out for you and certainly let you know before next Monday if it's, if there's supposed to be an end or there's actually equipment buying that helped them train in that particular avenue.
And then it also goes on to talk about the bipods and tripods. What are those used for?
You know, that's great, another great question. I don't know a great deal about that, but once again, what I'll do is have the lieutenant that heads up that unit. What I can do is have him on the study session on Monday so he can go into detail because I don't know a lot about that.
Okay, certainly, and finally, the last part of that is it describes equipment packs and I'm also wondering what's involved in those equipment packs as well.
Okay, you got it. I will have him come on and make sure he's, he's ready to answer all those questions.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Those are all my items, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor. And before we adjourn, we have to move to executive session, so I think we're gonna be on another line, James.
I still have to go.
Counselor Allen.
Oh, Allen, oh, Counselor Allen. Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry. Counselor Allen, it's your turn.
All right, thank you. I have items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. The first one, these are all actually passed committee, of course, that's why we're talking about them. But the first one is in regards to the Coronavirus Relief and Economic Security Act, Secures Act, the second round. And this is with the agreement partnership with Anadota County Department of Social Services to basically just administer the financial assistance. Any questions on that one? No? All right, twenty-six. This one, I think, Commissioner, I see Commissioner Collins is on. I know you did discuss this, but did you wanna give a brief explanation of this one?
Counselor, twenty-six, thank you, Counselor. I believe actually this would be with assessment.
Okay, so, yeah.
Good afternoon, Counselor Allen. Yes, this is a request to have the council authorize our department to do what we usually do, which is qualify people for the senior citizen exemption. The, the last-minute New York State Emergency Eviction and Foreclosure Prevention Act included language regarding applications and renewal applications for the senior citizen exemption and the disability exemption. We had already qualified, you know, dozens, well, actually thousands of seniors for, for this exemption. But the, this law that was passed on the twenty-eighth of December, or was signed by the governor on the twenty-eighth of December, makes it so that the local administrative body has to approve any, any of our removals from the last year's assessment role. So in certain cases, people have passed away, they, they've moved or they've sold the property or somebody else has moved into the property who doesn't qualify them. And in those cases, those people would normally not be eligible and we would like to just make sure that it's legal that we've, we've taken them off the roll.
Okay, oh, in this case, if the property is now owned by someone else, they will have to come and actually apply for the
For their own exemption, yes, exactly.
All right. Any questions on that one? No? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. And then the last one, item twenty-seven, that one was for two-twelve Meriman Ave. We didn't have any questions on the committee meeting. And Counselor Hogan, you are okay with this one moving?
We need you to get that to the land bank, two-twelve Maryman Avenue. It's a vaccine property.
Okay, I figured so. All right, so I am all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Okay, James, are we staying on the same line or are we moving to another line?
Oh, there's another invite, so I'll leave this open and open the other one as well.
President Hudson, if I could ask one question, Mr. Kaliva. Frank, I saw in the, I think it was New York Times saying that the new administration might push some money to the cities and states from FEMA in lieu of hoping that the next bill that would aid the cities and states would pass the Congress. Have you, did you see that? I mean, just be aware of that. I wanted to mention that to you.
Frank, that sounds ugly. Your system sounds horrible.
Your mic's messed up, you sound like a droid from Star Wars.
Just give me a thumbs up, Frank. Just give me a thumbs up. Okay, good, okay, good. Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna go into our executive session and I'll see you guys back here shortly.
President, so you're adjourning for which item?
Executive session. Right?
Yeah. Yes, normally you make the motion to go into executive session and then you have to come back out to adjourn the meeting?
Okay, who's still on here? I need a motion, Joe.
So move.
All right, second, all right. All right, second. All right, good. Thank you.